I do, Mayor. I just would like to encourage everyone to go to the Prescott Public Library and check out the Voices and Votes: Democracy in America. It's an amazing exhibit. It's basically a traveling exhibit from the Smithsonian. I've seen this exhibit in the Smithsonian, and it's terrific. But our bottom floor in the Founder's Suite has the exhibit that's from Smithsonian. But what's really special, if you go upstairs, you will see, this is another document that they're giving out to children. And if you go upstairs, you will see the Prescott portion of this. And I really want to commend Roger South, Martha Baden, and Rosemary just did an amazing job with the local. So if you go upstairs, there's a whole exhibit about, and Mayor, you were there, about Prescott over the generations, about democracy, wonderful things. And so we all, I think it will be there until July the 25th. So everybody, please go check that out because a lot of work has gone into it. And take your children. I'm planning on taking my little. She's a little small, but I'm going to explain it all to her and make her bear being with me. So please go do that. I just want to congratulate the library for doing such a fantastic job.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Today, we have an invocation by Pastor Matt Kotman with Solid Rock Church, and then I'll lead us in the pledge.
Join me in prayer. Father, we give you thanks for this day. You have made this day. This day is here on purpose. And so, Lord, we would ask for your purposes to come to pass for our dear city, that you would help the decisions that are made here today to work toward the flourishing of the Prescottonians. Lord, we pray for wisdom and direction to be given, that you would bring to light things that need to be brought to light, and that you would bring forth the things that need to be brought forth. And Father, we would ask that you would be glorified through the actions of our community, that love would prevail, and that your glory would shine. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. It's Police Call Roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Here.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Councilman Blair, can you hear me?
Let me double-check, make sure he's still there. He's still there. There he is. Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you so much. Well, we have a much anticipated presentation. Been waiting for a while to hear from our Prescott Fire Department. So we'll do a Prescott Fire Department National Accreditation presentation.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, members of the community. First and foremost, the achievement of being one of 240, give or take a few, fire agencies across this country as being conferred as credible under the Commission on Fire Accreditation International is no small feat. To this end, I'd like to thank the current and past mayors and city councils for their support. The road to become accredited has been a long and trying one, to say the least. In the aftermath of the economic downturn and depression of 2008, the Prescott Fire Department maintained its resilience and then was devastated on June 30th, 2013, with the loss of the Granite Mountain Hot Shot Crew, who we will memorialize in a week's time. On the heels of such a historic loss, the city, and in particular, the Fire Department, had to endure further issues to include, but not limited to, the escalation of the PSPRs debt, the pension liabilities, employment uncertainties that resulted in mid-level personnel departing for other opportunities, compensation in a realm that was less than perhaps our competitive neighbors, and freezing of positions, browning out, and closure of fire stations. Due to the commitment of our community and the efforts of a handful of individuals, we have continued to rebound and utilize the accreditation process as a shiny object for which all we could get behind. First, the passing of Prop. 443 kind of set this keystone for financial stability of the general fund. This passing allowed us to maintain our continuity of operations as an all-risk department and begin our quest in earnest to become the best that we can be. That achievement was realized on March 3rd, when myself and a few members of my senior staff and support departments appeared before the Commission on Fire Accreditation International in Orlando, Florida. During the hearing, our efforts were recognized by the Commission, and it was conferred by their 11 members that we were credible across all 10 categories and 254 independent performance measures. This effort reflects highly upon our city elected leaders, city manager, fellow directors, and the men and women of the Fire Department. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to present with you the achievement plaque for the accredited agency status spelling the years of 2000 through 2025. Mayor?
Thank you for that, Chief. Let's move on to consent agenda. Would any member like to pull anything from the consent agenda today?
Is it just the agenda, or are we doing?
Items 7A through 7D. Anybody? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 7A through 7D.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Let's take a vote.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Yes.
Councilman Sishka.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli.
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
All right. Let's move on to consent ordinance.
Item A, adoption of ordinance number 2020-1720 of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Prescott City Code Title 16, Street and Utility and Drainage Regulations, Chapter 16-4, 2007 City of Prescott Construction Site Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations Code, by inserting a new section 16-4-2, construction runoff requirements, and renumbering the remaining sections accordingly. 8B, adoption of ordinance number 2020-1721 of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a public sewer easement agreement from CLM Property Management LLC and Chamberlain Development Prescott LLC, and a public water and sewer easement agreement from James Deepwell Ranches Number 1 LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptances. 8C, adoption of ordinance number 2020-1722 of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving a land lease agreement, City Contract Number 2020-212, with Selco Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, a Delaware General Partnership for Communications Equipment located on city-owned right-of-way, APN 800-11-009K, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
Okay. I would like to pull item 8C for discussion. Any members want to pull anything else off consent ordinance?
I'd like to pull 8A for discussion. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll pull those two items. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Consent Ordinance Item 8B.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Yes.
Councilman Sishka.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli.
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
Okay. Let's look at item 8A. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a few questions about concerning the erosion and sediment control code. When I was looking at the actual amendment, it didn't mention sediment. So I was wondering, is that included in some other part of the code, and why wasn't it included in this amendment?
Councilwoman Rusing, Gwen Roach with Public Works Department. Erosion and sediment control is a common term. The adoption of this change is in alignment with the MS-4 permit, which is regulated through Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. And so the language, in fact, the entire purpose of this amendment is to be in alignment with how their codes are regulated. And so we've emulated their language. But erosion and sediment controls are one in the same. They go hand in hand, and they're enforced together.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Entertain a motion on that one?
Mayor, I move to adopt Consent Ordinance 8A.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Yes.
Councilman Sishka.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Orr.
Here. Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Mangarelli.
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
All right. Let's move on to item 8C. I did receive some questions from some neighbors on this cell phone tower. So Gwen, or I'm sorry, Dawn, are you going to enlighten us a little bit? And there's concerns about the turnaround up there and just inhibiting the ability to turn around and just kind of exactly what's going to be there and where it's going to be?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Let me pull this up exhibit. I might give you a little bit of an idea. Get this on here. Give it a minute to come on. Get it to focus. That's a little bit better. That might help a little bit. This particular cell site that we're looking at, there's a cul-de-sac right in this area right here. Right there, you can barely see it, is actually a current city communications tower in that location. The proposed site for the cell tower is also going to be in that same location. Literally, it is just a couple feet away from that existing location, which has been there for decades. We used to have a water tank, basically right where that arrow ends. A water tank sat there until about 10 years ago, when we did the, put a new water tank bar there up Copper Basin Road, and we removed that one. To give you an idea, that's how big that area is. And the site itself, where it's going to be, just might give you a little bit of an idea. This is the location of the current city communications tower and the height of it. And this would be the new tower right here. This one's 30 feet high, and this one would be 40. The city, what Verizon's proposing to do is take the city's communications equipment and put it on the top of this pole, and then locate theirs at the same 30-foot level that the current tower's at. Not much difference in the size of the pole itself, location. They're going to have ballards, which are depicted down here, for protection from any traffic could be there. But there is no traffic issues as far as from the traffic department. And when they looked at the studies on this, they approved the plans.
So thanks, Dawn. In terms of fire trucks getting up there and turning around, this is not going to inhibit the ability to do that?
It will not. That actually, the cul-de-sac, if you look at the round portion of what the cul-de-sac would be, there's actually a section that's pulled off. I might be able to show you on this one. I might be able to show you on here a little bit. This is the actual cul-de-sac, and this portion here is the portion that the city had also acquired when we had our water tank on there, because it didn't quite fit on the cul-de-sac itself. And our current tower sits right here. And as you can see, the actual cul-de-sac is this portion. We're over in this part of the right-of-way, which is kind of like a separate piece from it. We expanded the right-of-way, and we put the original tower there and stuff, so it's not impeded by the traffic.
So the cul-de-sac is not impinged on?
No, it's not at all. It's actually pushed off to it, that little extra piece that's over here. This little part sits separately from the cul-de-sac itself. And that's where the current tower's at, and it has been there for, like I said, literally for decades. It's a city communications tower.
And this is all in the city right-of-way?
It's all in the city right-of-way. And Verizon's proposing to paint all of the above-ground stuff, the arrays, the pole, everything else painted green to kind of help it match into the background, too, which is even more so than what we have up there now.
Okay. Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would just like to clarify that I have a Verizon cellphone, and I'm not anti-cellphone or cell tower. And I fully support our police and fire and their communications. And I believe this antenna that's up there is part of our police and fire communication system. So with that being said, I went up there and inspected the site and actually met the property owner, whose mic's here, to make a few comments. So I drove up there, and the cul-de-sac that you're mentioning, I didn't really see a cul-de-sac. It just looked like the property owner's driveway. And the current antenna is a piece of galvanized pipe that's about three inches diameter, and it's pretty innocuous. And our property owner, who's concerned about this, he had just purchased that property six weeks ago, and he had absolutely no idea that this was going to come to a vote today. And I just happened to show up to look at the site. So my concern is the lack of notice, and I completely support the private property owner's rights. And I feel that we have to be careful that we're not too overreaching with our governmental regulations and ordinances here. And I would like to recommend that maybe we explore a better location, even on the property owner's side. It doesn't have to be on the city's property, because it's a very, very small, it's a driveway, and the gentleman has several vehicles. He has an airstream, and I just cannot imagine how he's going to get an airstream in and out of there with a 40-foot cell tower and all the mechanicals that have to go along with this cell tower. So I just would recommend that we have a conversation with the owner, and that we table this and explore some options, and give the poor gentleman a chance to prevent his property values from decreasing. Thank you.
Dawn, the footprint of this is 132 square feet. Is that right?
Yeah. It's literally, it's literally six feet by 22 feet.
Six by 22. Can you get that site map back up there?
Oh, yeah.
So this rectangle, is that what you're showing up there, is the site?
Correct, correct, Mayor. Yeah, this here is the actual site. This area right here would be the lease space.
And where's the cul-de-sac again?
The cul-de-sac itself is this area right here.
Okay.
And then.
Do you have a number? I mean, do you have, like, how wide is that? It looked like it was about maybe 10 feet?
I don't have a dimension on here that I can see.
See, there's no dimensions here.
Actually, here, hold on a second. It's 82 feet in diameter. The cul-de-sac's 82 feet in diameter.
Dawn, what's the address up there? Do we have an address?
I'm not sure if I have an address for that property, the property owner that we're talking about on top of the thing. I do not have an address for that.
1465 Sierra Vista.
Other questions, comments from the council?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes. Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Coincidentally, I was listening and watching the County Board of Supervisors' last meeting on June 17th. At that time, their developmental director, Dave Williams, was going to present to the Board of Supervisors a discussion and possible action regarding their wireless communication facilities and the ordinances that they have that apply to them. However, he asked that the presentation be postponed for the second meeting in July, because he had just become aware of a ruling by the FCC requiring, and I'm going to quote from a dissenting opinion of the five members of the FCC board. Today, the FCC, and this is dated June 9th of this year, "Today, the FCC adopts a declaratory ruling that requires every state and local government to immediately review and update their current ordinances, policies, and application systems involving wireless towers. They have to rework the way they process new requests, how they measure tower height, what they do with requests to add more equipment, and how they conceal structures to preserve the visual character of their communities." So consequently, this ruling will have an impact not only on new towers and the subsequent change that they might want to add, co-locations or other facilities, and even though this seems like a very minor change. Because of this ruling, I think we really need to take a moment and pause to see any alterations, changes of location, and how they might impact future additions. For example, this is primarily Verizon Communication.
It will be.
Will be. Okay. So if AT&amp;T, or T-Mobile, or even Dish Network, or those kinds of wanted to add to this, there are certain shot clock requirements that if they don't show any substantial change, they can, once they even apply for a permit, all the application reviews and everything else have to be completed within 60 days, or it's automatically approved. So I would say that we might want to pause on this, review these requirements, because if our county counterpart feels that he needs to delay to be able to review this on any of their policies, I certainly think we should as well.
Okay. Mr. Palladini?
Mayor, the FCC ruling that Councilman Good is referring to is talking about modifications to existing cell towers. And there are some issues with that in terms of what are considered non-substantial changes. In other words, the increasing of the height of a tower by 10% or 20 feet, whichever is greater. So in other words, a 40-foot tower can be increased by up to 20 feet. It's not considered a substantial change. But in talking to our community development folks, those kinds of reviews are done by staff. They're simply building permit-type reviews. They're not public reviews, so the 60 days isn't generally going to be a problem. In this case, we're talking something sort of wholly different. We're talking about a city lease. We're not talking about approval through the normal use permit process. This is sort of a business decision of the council, and it's also to fill a gap in coverage and service for Verizon. So the two factors that come into play are, does this fill a gap in Verizon's service? And according to Verizon, it does. And second, is this a business decision the city wants to make in terms of generating revenue that goes to the general fund in a site that's already got a tower on it? And I don't know if the, is the footprint on the ground roughly the same, or is it going to be expanded, this six by 22?
Looks to be expanded.
Okay. So really, your business decision here is you're going to increase the tower by 10 feet in height, and you're going to increase the footprint on the ground by some dimension. I would suggest that in this particular tower case, you're not going to be able to extend the height of the tower, because the city's communication system is at the top. So you wouldn't be able to go on top of that. You'd either have to push the city's communication system up and fill in, you know, in between, I guess, the Verizon antenna, and if somebody else wanted to co-locate on that same tower. I'm not sure that's easy to do. So I'm not sure it's really a concern that this may be modified later on to go taller. I would also suggest that our policy and our land development code, when it comes to cell towers, is pro-co-location. We want co-location. We don't want a bunch of separate towers with individual antennas on them. So the trade-off is, is you got to go taller to co-locate. But the benefit is, is you don't have a bunch of individual towers around. And that's kind of the policy that our land development code promotes. So the issue that Councilman Good's talking about is kind of separate from this issue. This is really your business decision as to whether or not this is a good location that fills a Verizon gap in service, and whether this is a good location for a, I guess, a modification to an existing tower. But I would suggest it's not necessary to postpone it based on the FCC ruling at this point.
Okay. Councilmember Rusing?
To me, it's more than a business decision. This is a gentleman who moved here from Kentucky and purchased a home, and then he has this disaster on his hands. And I'd like to bring up, it's also health and public safety, because I think that it'd be very hard to avoid running into this tower unless it has a big fence around it or something. And also, for 40 feet, what about the fall zone? Because from my inspection, 40 feet is going to fall on this gentleman's property. There's no way there's a 40-foot diameter around that tower.
Councilman, I'll try to answer a couple of your questions there. One is that tower's basically going to be located in this dirt area over in this, right about in here. Not on the, it's not on the pavement. It's in the right-of-way over in this area. So it's actually not where cars would be driving. They are having protective ballards that are placed around any ground equipment, which is standard and done to traffic engineering design. Falling-wise, the height of the tower to his property, it is, it cannot fall onto his home. It's way farther than 40 feet.
But it can't fall onto his property. I'm not talking about his home. It cannot fall onto his property line. And he has a airstream that he parks here, and he has several vehicles out here. It may not hit his home, but it would definitely hit anything or anybody that is in that driveway. And I believe that's, isn't that in our city ordinance, or is it in the cell tower building code?
That I'm not sure, Councilwoman. The tower, if it fell towards the street, I guess that would be no different than the other tower that we have along any city street. It could fall into a city street. Nothing's been done for this entire project.
So it will fall onto his property.
He said it could fall onto the street, not onto the property. So let's make the record clear that if it falls onto the street, it falls onto the street, no different than any other cell tower the city has that's in a city right-of-way. That, by the way, I'm not sure, from a historical standpoint, we've had a cell tower fall over in the city. But that being said, if it falls into the street, it falls onto the street, no different here than any other cell tower in a right-of-way. If it falls on a car that's in a street, it falls onto a car in the street. But again, it's not going to, it's not going to fall onto the property.
Are you good?
I think I'd like to hear from the gentleman, too.
Yep. We'll have public comment. By the way, there are cards back here, right, Sarah, for public comment?
Yes, there are. And I have one so far.
Okay. Yeah. If you want to speak, go ahead and fill out a public comment card for us, please.
Yeah, I actually have the Verizon rep here, too, if you have any questions.
Yeah, that'd be great. Councilman Sishka?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Is that a public cul-de-sac, or is that a driveway?
That is a public cul-de-sac. The property may, it may possibly his driveway encroach into the cul-de-sac in the public right-of-way. I'd have to have a survey done, Dawn, to know that for a fact.
Well, I don't want to start a whole new, brand-new, open up a brand-new can of worms here.
You see that around town occasionally.
Okay. You know, it was just, you know, when it was up there, and it was just a drawing, it just looked like, okay, the cul-de-sac's here, everything else is here, and it looks like the cul-de-sac has been built into. So.
That's possible.
You know, I'm just asking.
It's possible, and it's possible that the deck on the back of the house is also encroaching in the right-of-way. But I'm not here for that discussion.
Well, I'm somewhat disappointed that somehow this ended up on a consent agenda, because I think that it's much more, it's much more controversial and important than just saying, okay, let's vote on these things. just saying, okay, let's vote on these things, and we'll just kind of, you know, to the public, it looks like we're kind of pushing it under the carpet. And so, you know, I have no problem having discourse on this, and I think that communication, particularly up in that area, is extremely important. And my question to any of these people up there is, what would you have us do? You know, I mean, and for John, I say, what can we be discussing and what can't we be discussing?
Well, this topic is open for discussion. In other words, it's a, again, it's not a use permit type analysis we would do for this cell tower. This is a, and when I use the term "business decision," I don't mean to diminish the issue. It is a business decision of the council, as opposed to sort of a policy decision, which is legislative. It's a business decision, do you want to lease this space to Verizon for a cell tower and co-locate the city's public safety antenna on top of it? That's the business decision. I don't mean to demean or diminish the issue. It's an important issue. But the option is, you know, either locate it here, or, you know, find the Verizon, you know, leave the public safety tower in place, and don't do the business deal with Verizon, and then let Verizon find another location in this area to fill a service gap, which then may put you into that use permit analysis, which frankly gives you less control over the situation, because the FTC regulates what you can and can't do when it comes to the use permit decision-making. So you have absolute discretion to deny this, but then it pushes, it potentially pushes Verizon to find an alternate location that you may, that you most likely, if it's on private property and they need a use permit, you have less discretion. I mean, that's the conundrum you're in.
Thank you.
And to dovetail with John's comments, then you would have two towers in this generally same location instead of one.
Well, I'd like to just clarify that what is currently there, when the owner bought the property, is a, it's like a galvanized steel metal pipe. It's about this big around with one little antenna at the top. And so going from that to a 40-foot monopole with co-located panels around the top is a pretty big leap. And I think that I'd like to make a motion after we hear from the owner of the property that we table this and discuss options with him. I think that, you know, we're a small town, and I think that we should give the owner a chance to digest this and look at the options. And I'm disturbed that as far as notice, it was June 15th, that it was a public notice in the Courier, and here we are voting on it a week later.
It was also in on June 7th.
June 7th, thank you.
And the 14th. I just wanted to be clear that it was in there twice.
And Councilwoman, that is per City Charter, Section 8.
Did you make a motion, Councilmember Rusing?
Well, I'd like to hear from.
Well, we definitely can do that. I was just clarifying if you made a motion.
I would like to make a motion.
So we have a motion on the table? Is there a second?
Restate the motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we table ordinance number 2020-1722, approving a land lease agreement, city contract number 2020-212, with Cell Co. Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, Delaware General Partnership for Communication Equipment, located on city-owned right-of-way, APN number 800-11-009K, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents, et cetera.
Well, second the motion to postpone or...
Table, item 8C. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments or questions from the council at this point, Councilman Blair or Councilwoman Scholl?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
I guess if we, if we table it, what's our game plan? You know, it sounds like from what John said, that we're kind of stuck either way in terms of if we decide to look for, you know, different locations for the tower. So I'm just wondering if we're tabling it till when and could do what?
Hey, Mayor?
Yeah, Councilman Blair.
I think, Mr. Palladini, so many things go on with cell towers that have to do with cell tower height. They want to locate them in residential neighborhoods right back to somebody that doesn't know that was going to happen. I'm opposed to doing any of this until we have a study session and talk about the difference between residential and commercial, the co-locating on the towers that already exist, opposed to single munnelled poles as well as new buildings. Alls you do is take away people's property values in neighborhoods. When you start talking about Iron Springs Road, Copper Vista, you have up there the Sheriff's Posse House that has 10 acres. They can put a monopole up there and do 50 or 60 feet by, you know, by code if they wanted to do it. We wanted to give them that, because there's nobody that would ever see it. So I think we need to look at, we have, we have the ability to look at what's going on. I hear engineers all the time that says, oh, if we don't put it there, it won't work. And I'm also very concerned that they've done some research about those poles being attached on the water tanks right next to public infrastructure, police and fire antennas, that it actually interrupts that signal. So I would like to have some further information as well.
Thank you, Councilman Blair. So, Mr. Palladini, Councilwoman Scholl was just asking, what's the go-forward? You know, if we table, then what?
Well, it's all up to you, then. You know, Councilman Blair suggested a study session. I think it sounded like on sort of cell tower issues in general, probably some legal discussion, which we could do in study or in exec session, probably some engineering discussion from the cell tower industry, you know, and with all due respect to Councilman Blair, it's, you know, the cell tower folks are supposed to come, you know, and say, this is the best location, and there isn't an alternate location that works. And that's a, that's a technical analysis. Now, the city can always go out and do counter-analysis to say, we disagree with your, particularly in these use permit processes, you know, we disagree with your analysis, we think there are two other locations that are better, let's, in, say, industrial areas versus residential. I mean, the challenge, obviously, on Copper Basin is, is it's all residential, so you really don't have the choice of putting it someplace that's not, that's commercial up in that area. So you're, at some level, if the provider can establish they have a gap in service for that provider, and then their technical analysis is, we've researched these two or three or four locations, and this is the best one, or this is the one that works, we don't have a lot of leeway in terms of denying when it comes to use permits. Now, like I said before, this is a business decision of the council, whether we're going to lease to Verizon or not this location. So we have much more discretion, you have much more discretion to deny or to postpone this till a later date. But I guess my suggestion would be agreeing with Councilmember Scholl is, if we're going to postpone this, then we should set up relatively quickly, A, a study session and bring in the industry folks and to talk about the technological issues, bring in our public works folks and our community development folks and the legal department, and talk about this thing sort of thoroughly, so people kind of have a better understanding of what your decision matrix is, and what, and there are particular things that don't, that you cannot consider. Radio transmission, you know, wave-type decisions that are just prohibited by the FTC. So happy to do that at some point in the future. I'll defer to Michael as to when, and Sarah as to when the best time for that would be. But I don't know, I can't tell you that there's an urgency now that this needs to be approved today. I have to defer to Don or whomever.
Don's saying, no, it's not urgent.
Mayor, could I? People in that area have had poor self-perception for a decade. I think, I can't see a change in these things.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I've talked, I've spoken to several people today on the phone, and, but I just, I would like to set the record clear that this was posted in the paper, according to what we needed to do by the city. And we are talking about going from 30 to 40 feet. We're talking adding 10 feet. So this is not a new tower. I think that's important, just for our public to know. And I'm certainly not opposed to, it seems like every time we have a cell tower come before us, it's a major issue. I'll just, very quickly, I was speaking to someone today. I'm over by Prescott Lakes, and we put that cell tower over by Basis School. We talked for months and months about that one, right? I drove by, I bet, six times before I realized, oh, the cell tower's up, because now it looks like a pine tree. But I'm, I'm just not opposed to continuing this conversation, and so I would say, you know, why not table it? The person I spoke with today was not able to come because of health issues. She would like to be here just to hear. So I guess I would agree, Mayor, that let's consider tabling this.
Yep, very good. I think it's a good suggestion, too, to do a study session. These tend to be rather controversial issues with cell towers. Councilman Sishka?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say that I'm really tired of the lousy cell service up there. It is absolutely horrible, and it's dangerous. So somehow, we've got to figure out a way to put a cell tower up there that's going to allow these people to have decent cell service.
Councilman, Verizon came forward to the city about a year and a half ago.
Oh, I know they did.
To try to put a tank, a cell tower farther up Copper Basin, up on our water tank, and that one got disapproved. So they've kind of did their research and came down to, pretty much, this is the place it needs to be. They actually go around and check all the reception everywhere, so. On the technical end of it, I would defer to Regdastria from Verizon on that.
Okay. Councilmember Rusing?
Oh, I agree. I think a study session is long overdue, because, you know, there's another cell tower planned in Yabapai Hills, and that's caused quite a furor. And I think the root of the problem is our zoning. We allow cell towers, million-gallon water tanks, and mausoleums on residentially zoned property. And a lot of people don't know that. When you buy a residential lot, you think it's going to be residential, but actually, according to the city of Prescott zoning, it's no different than an industrial, commercial, or a business zoning. And I think that's something we need to look at, because it causes a lot of stress to people. And if you want to put a cell tower in your home, on your lot, and it's, and even goes with the city, if it's residentially zoned, then you should get it rezoned to business or commercial, and then proceed. But just to be able to pull a SUP permit and throw a cell tower up in people's backyards, I think we really need to look at it, because Prescott Valley doesn't allow cell towers on their residential lots. Thank you.
Don, let's have Verizon just speak to this a little bit in terms of what they, what they've found in terms of this location.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm going to take my mask off. A little easier to speak this way. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I've heard a lot of questions come up regarding the location, why we're here. As some of you were here several years ago, when we were at the city water facility, we were looking to do a pine tree. Ultimately, that met the zoning requirements, but there were issues that came up with possible underlying ownerships and the deed restrictions, which pushed us away from that location. We proceeded to start looking at other locations to do larger sites similar to that pine tree, similar to the pine tree, which is over by Prescott Lakes. I actually reached out to Councilman Blair regarding that facility he mentioned earlier, and the Sheriff's Posse, they never got back to me about doing anything there. And so I started to look in the residential area there, and, you know, there's the clubhouse at the community, and unfortunately, that's too far down. It's in a bit of a hole. What we ultimately came up with was this location. This is a site that has two panel antennas on it, two one-foot-wide panel antennas that are going to be on a 40-foot pole, which is replacing a 30-foot pole. Part of the reason, what we did here is, we actually are about 15 feet away from the existing pole, because we wanted to move it further to the west to be out of the view line of the home there. You are certainly correct in saying that it is a fairly small space up there. What we are talking about doing, you know, there's been discussion of doing something that's 6 feet by 22 feet or whatever. The ground space we're taking up for our ground equipment is 2 feet by 6 feet. It's tiny. That overall space includes where the replacement pole is going to go, and it includes an above-ground meter. When you talk about a 40-foot pole, if this was the power company or any utility in the right-of-way, there would not be questions of, is it going to fall over? This is an engineered, designed pole. We are off of the entirety of the asphalt. I've got the actual survey here, if you wanted to take a look at it, and it shows where that edge of asphalt is versus where the actual dirt is and where the site is.
Yeah, you can put it up there.
Okay. Let's see. Excellent. So do you mind if I come over there?
Yeah, I'll go over and check it.
Okay.
Do you want to zoom in at all?
So, as you see here, the, this line right here is actually, that one, is the edge of the asphalt, and it goes around. So we are on the gravel area just off of that edge. Now, the existing pole is right there, kind of straddles the property line between the city property here and some neighboring property. And what you've got is, our site would consist of some equipment cabinets right there, and then the new pole would be right here. So we'd go from 30-foot pole that's there to a 40-foot pole that's right here. Now, it will be 10 feet taller. I mean, it is 10 feet taller. Your stuff will be up top. Part of the reason for that is to avoid any interference issues. Another part of the reason for that is our antennas don't need to be terribly high because of the topography here. What we are trying to do is cover that area to the north. I mean, this is going to be a basic coverage, so folks can use their phones. The police, the fire, will have better communication as they get down in the trees there. It's a unique opportunity to be up at this kind of elevation to avoid building a larger structure. We happen to be in the right-of-way, so we are able to work directly with the city on trying to do something. The gentleman owns the home there. Obviously, he does have some stuff parked there, but all of these items will be within the city right-of-way. It will not be blocking, and, you know, the gentleman receives the benefit, or has received the benefit, unbeknownst to him, that the large water tank that used to be in the middle of this cul-de-sac is not there anymore. I mean, decisions the city makes in its right-of-way do obviously impact neighbors, sometimes very positively, and sometimes it's not the greatest thing in the world. However, there's already a structure there. We are not looking for a zoning approval. We're looking to do a lease with the city. These questions that have come up before about FCC, that, as staff has indicated, that they do not regulate the leasing aspect of things. They regulate the zoning. And I can tell you just about any zoning ordinance anywhere, if Dave Williams was here right now, he'd tell you, hey, if they had some county right-of-way and we were looking to replace a 30-foot with 40-foot pole, that's absolutely something they'd want to do. It's well within the goal of almost every ordinance to try and utilize an existing pole or replace it. It is certainly going to be bigger. It's going to have more girth to it. The question had come up about future co-locations or future extensions, expansions. That would come back to the city entirely, because it's a lease. It's not a zoning question where there's a shot clock issue with the FCC. We looked for years and years and years. After several years, we worked on trying to do that site at the water facility. That did not work out. Went back to the drawing board, looked at going on APS poles, whether they were along Copper Basin or heading to the east from where the water facility was. Unfortunately, that entire HOA, the site didn't work, even going on a power pole there. And they had some taller power poles there as well, which would have been great. But getting over the trees, once you start getting down into that bowl, becomes a real problem. So we went and looked, and this particular location, hey, there's a 30-foot pole up there, and we could at least provide some basic coverage to the folks in the area through those trees with a site with two antennas total on it. And, you know, that's why we're here, and that's why we have been working with staff on coming up with a lease agreement to bring in front of you. to bring in front of you.
Very good. Well, thank you. Any questions, Reg? Okay. Let's go to public comment.
Michael Napier.
Hello, my name is Michael Napier and I'm the, uh, the owner of this property. And I appreciate the, uh, the opportunity to, uh, to address this issue that I just found out about yesterday at five o'clock. So, um, if I can, I would like to go over here and make some corrections on what exactly is, is taking place.
That's fine.
Okay. I've lived there for, uh, seven weeks and in, in, in this seven weeks, I've had, um, probably close to a dozen different delivery trucks come up to this area because there's no turnaround. Um, I personally had some furniture delivered by a 30-foot truck. It took us 15 minutes to get it turned around. Uh, I had to go out and direct him and we went inch by inch until we finally got him turned around and go in the other direction. Um, currently, as it, as it is, the pole that is currently here is at the end of this right here. And there is a meter that stands in front of it with two, uh, two pylons, which at that point doesn't impede drivers that much from, from doing any type of turnaround. Uh, what they're proposing to do is to build a six-foot by 22-foot with these pylons in front. And I think the last one would be right there at the tip. There is no way, all this is flat land. Those trucks now come up to this area right here, back this way, and then turn around. They are impeding any type of turnaround to this flat area that is actually on my property. Uh, the, this, the city actually owns from this line that's right here. This cul-de-sac does not exist. Uh, my driveway is actually cut on the corner. The city does have a right-of-way of this area here. So what they're proposing to do is to add 22 feet to an area already, um, compact by any type of vehicle that come up there to do a turnaround. And if anybody's been up there, you will understand, it is a difficult place to turn around, even in a car. So, uh, when they put this, uh, if this goes up in the area it is, that eliminates any area right here that those trucks can come up and then do a turn and go around. The asphalt is from here and it goes right around through there. And then obviously here in the front. There is no asphalt over in here. That's a cliff it goes down over on that side.
So this doesn't exist?
Oh, no, that doesn't exist.
Well, that's what I was.
Yeah, that cul-de-sac.
I was wondering what they were talking about, this giant cul-de-sac, cause all I saw was just these two, this, this is the actual road, physical.
The, uh, the, uh, sanitation comes up, um, uh, they have difficulties turning around as it is already. And now we're adding, uh, uh, more footage, uh, more pylons. You're gonna have some issues. And if a fire truck had to come up there, they're, they're not gonna turn around with this equipment there. Uh, they're not. And then, and obviously, when you start talking about the height of the tower, uh, what's currently there, I understand it's a police and fire. Uh, when I bought the property, I asked about that. I was absolutely fine with that. But now you're asking to do a business with somebody, uh, and then put a person who's moved here, uh, without any knowledge of this and say to them, well, we're going to do business with Verizon, allow them to, to put this structure in, literally in your backyard. And if that tower did fall, it would fall on my house. It's, it's only about 40 feet from, from where they're wanting to put the tower to my, to my house.
Very good. Well, thank you so much, uh, for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Jim Tatum.
Hi, Mayor and Council. When you guys do go to a study session, I would challenge you to look at a couple, a couple items up here. Uh, one is the, can I go over here also?
Sure.
What Mike was talking about is correct. This, this whole area does not exist. So when, when they say this is a cul-de-sac, that's a little bit deceptive. The road, this road, if you go one foot off of that road, you've just tumbled off of a cliff. I mean, it's, it's probably the best view in Prescott up there. I mean, it's a cliff-lined driveway. Um, and, you know, possibly there could be some compromise in the placement of this thing and it might work. What Mike is talking about here also, where, when he talks about, can you, can we put up the photo again and bring that up? Is that the one that y'all have that shows? Is there, you had a close-up of, or something about?
One second here.
Of the other tower?
No, of that, there you go. That's good right there. You guys can see maybe a little better visually, this area, this area all right here. No, I'm in the wrong spot, aren't I?
Yeah, down.
Right here. Okay. This area all right here, that looks flat. It is, it is absolutely not flat. The driveway Mike's talking about is this dirt part right here. If that, if they put a bollard across there, it makes this section very small. The only way to get a truck up there and turn it around is, is exactly what he's talking about, is to go into that dirt spot and turn around. I've lived up there in two different homes for 40 years. I know it like the back of my hand. But if there could, you know, possibly be some compromise in where you're placing that, it's possible that it could work. I would, I would just challenge you guys to take some time and have a fire truck go up there with you and imagine where that placement is gonna be. Draw a line there and turn it around. I don't think it's gonna happen. So appreciate the time and as you guys look at that, just study it a little more and I think you'll come to that conclusion.
Mayor, can I ask?
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Any other public comment?
No, Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
Just a quick question, uh, Reg. I wonder, could you, um, would it be possible if we just went up 10 feet on the, where the tower is now? I mean, it seems like it's working. Everybody's, it's been up there for decades. So can we not just simply do a better tower and go 10 feet?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, um, if the existing pole were, the reason we went where we did, there were two reasons actually. Uh, one was to try and get out of the view shed, um, and stay out of the road as much as possible. But we need to be a few feet away at least for the foundation, cause there is an engineered foundation. Um, it, we could go within a couple of feet of the existing pole location, uh, if, if that is, is something that's of interest to the city. I mean, the reason that we laid it out the way we did was to take up the least amount of space, stay off the asphalt, because obviously that'd be the turnaround area there, and try to stay out of the way as much as possible. And a, as was pointed out, the area on the, on map on the survey that calls out, shows the nice cul-de-sac, much of that goes off the hill, cause that's just the old way it was platted originally. Um, so we're, we're dealing with, as they've said, a small amount of space, but we could certainly use a pole in generally the same location instead of moving 15 feet.
So that would be an option.
It wouldn't impact, technologically, it would not impact the signal provided by the site.
Okay. Councilmember Rusing?
Oh, I'd just like to wrap it up with a few more comments. Um, I, I don't understand why we don't have a, a city policy and why Verizon and, and their representatives can't mail. You know, it seems to me this is a legal issue and you should have a written notice and it wouldn't have been hard to drop a letter in the mail to the one person that lives on, uh, on top of that hill. And, uh, secondly, just to clarify, this is a very iconic house. Uh, it's up on top of the hill. It's the one that looks like the, uh, ski chalet where the roof comes all the way down to the, uh, to the ground. And it is on top of a very prominent, uh, but narrow hill. And I can just imagine how hard it would be if there was an emergency up there with ambulances and fire trucks on a snow day. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamar?
Yeah, I, uh, we'll talk to Sarah with Clerk's Office about a timeline. One thing we all need to keep in mind is all of these residents have been dealing with less-than-ideal service for multiple years because Verizon has looked around and they have done their due diligence and all these people still have bad coverage.
Okay. We have a motion to table item 8C in a second. Let's take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Councilman Blair? Hello? I'm muted.
You're unmuted. We can hear you.
You can hear me good because it says I'm muted. I agree.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yeah.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you for that. Let's move on to item 9A, please.
Consideration for a permanent extension of premises, application for a Series 6 bar liquor license from Amy S. Nations, applicant for Montezuma Tavern, location 216 South Montezuma Street. The application fee has been paid. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance. No public comments have been received.
Did you say the applicant was here?
I don't. I don't believe. She is here now.
Okay. Uh, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I, um.
Excuse me, I'd like to, I have a few questions.
Yep. We, we can, we can get to that. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I move to approve recommendation for a liquor license number LIQE20-010 for a permanent extension, uh, premises for Series 6 bar liquor license at Montezuma Tavern, located 216 South Montezuma Street.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Rusing?
Uh, yes. Um, this is a very, um, historic, wonderful place and, um, I just have a question. There wasn't a, since this is an extension of premises, there was no site plan or elevation or any information as to what extension we're talking about. I went down there last night and of course, it was closed and they've done a very nice seating area out on the sidewalk in front of the, of the business and it looks very nice. And I'm wondering, is that the extension of premises that we're talking about or are they talking about the back part of the property where they have the outdoor patio and it is, are they gonna extend towards the school grounds? Please clarify. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Councilwoman Rusing. Um, this is actually, the extension area is actually out in front on the sidewalk. Uh, the Public Works Department processed a license agreement for them to provide a small fenced area in order for them to have a couple of tables and chairs on the patio similar to, um, a business just north of them and then a couple businesses just south of them. So it'd be very similar to the coffee shop and Cupper, Cuppers and some of the others along there. So it'll be approximately six feet from the building and approximately 15 feet across the front. Uh, but we've already issued the license agreement for them to, to use the city right-of-way. This is just an extension of their liquor license so they can serve alcohol out there.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. That really clarifies things and it is a, a very nice addition to the frontage along there.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to say, I, I love what's happening in that area of town now, along Montezuma Avenue. It's, uh, Cuppers, there's a new ice cream store, there's gonna be some things on the corner, so it's really nice to see South Montezuma coming out.
Somo.
Somo.
So, yes.
Somo. Uh, anything else from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Uh, let's vote.
Councilman Blair? You're not muted, I promise.
Councilman Blair?
You have, you have a switch and I have a switch.
I can switch you. So I've unswitched you. You're not muted.
Yeah.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yeah.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to item 10A, please.
Approval of city contract number 2016-104A3, an amendment to the professional services agreement with Aaron's Company LLC for lobbying services through June 30th, 2022.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tyler Goodman from the City Manager's Office. Just want to give a little intro and thank Barry for all he's done so far. Um, I've been working with him for about four years and his help and assistance and guidance has been invaluable to me and to the city, I believe. As Sarah mentioned, this is, um, you're, you are considering an amendment to the professional services agreement in the amount of 46,000, uh, 46,200 per year, uh, to be extended for two years. And, uh, so with that, I know Barry is here with us and he has an update on the session, although it was abbreviated, but I'll turn it over to him, uh, for that update. Barry.
Reminded me of my old telephone company days, those senior people arguing about cell towers. About 40 minutes of my life I'll never get back. Anyway, uh, Barry Aaron's, uh, the Aaron's Company. It's a pleasure to be here. I wanted to introduce Angelica Terraza, who you've met before, who's my associate, works with me on a variety of issues. Uh, and, and I just wanted to give you a brief, uh, review of what happened. We started, we stopped, we started again, then we stopped permanently. And that's kind of the way the session went. But I did want to highlight a couple of things. Number one, in our legislative agenda, we did endorse the Tourism Marketing Authority. Uh, we got right up to the edge. Uh, we got that through the Senate with some modifications, a lot of good work, a lot of help from Senator Fan. We got it over the House in that last week after they started back up again. They heard it in committee, uh, and then they heard it on the last day in rules, but we just flat ran out of time. So we'll be back with it. And I'm optimistic that we'll get it done either in the next special session, I'm gonna go over that briefly in a minute, or in the regular session next year. I would tell you that right now, that is probably one of the few ways that convention visitors' bureaus or municipal tourism offices will be able to raise their own marketing funds with the permission of the people who are creating those funds. It's a really, really good way of doing it and, uh, looking forward to continuing that battle. The other, uh, bill that I spent a lot of time on was, uh, House Bill 2284. And, uh, Councilwoman Rusing and I got to know each other quite well, uh, going to committee hearings and, and visiting with members and so on. And that has taken a different turn now on the Prescott Dells issue. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on it except to say, it never got voted down in any committee. Uh, we, we really worked hard. I, I commend, uh, Councilwoman Rusing and her, her posse. Uh, she always came with, uh, a variety of folks who had knowledge of the issues and knowledge of the area and it was, uh, a great help to me. And it's always nice to have the local folks come down, uh, the real people kind of come down and, and visit and I appreciate that. Uh, the hot shots money, uh, you'll remember last year, Senator Fan, in her first year as president, put in a annual $1 million. We had to make sure that that was continued in the base. We were able to do that. That was done by the first, first week of session when the budgets were issued. We were successful. That's in there. It's likely to continue to be in there for the next five years. But, you know, you kinda gotta keep your eye on it. And when they were talking about skinny budgets, that was one of the first places I went to in the budget document and it, and it was there. So, so I think we're in good shape on that. At the end of the session, um, when they finally signed it died, there was a lot of talk about special session. And one of the, one of the comments in the special session was going to be that they needed to, to tweak the budget because of the loss of revenue. Well, it turns out the loss of revenue wasn't as severe as they expected. So the protected deficit is well within the range of being able to fall in the cash carry forward that was anticipated and certainly with a buffer of having the rainy day fund. So the sense now is you probably don't need to go back in now. They always have next January where they can tweak some things, but it will not affect existing contracts. They'll have the money to pay those contracts. That works out nicely. Second thing that was talked about was education. Uh, the Department of Education, uh, came out with their guidance, uh, for reopening. And I've been working very closely with, uh, Tim Carter, who's your county school superintendent. Uh, I represent the County School Superintendent's Association. And I will tell you, it's, 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 uh, quite chaotic around the state because there is no one school district who's going to do it the same as another school district. As a matter of fact, there are some school districts who are going to have different K, uh, K-six schools or different, K-twelve schools or different nine twelve schools doing, doing different things. And the problem is, is you have very, very significant statutes that say how long a school year's got to be, how long a school week's got to be, how you, how you, uh, uh, entertain your dollars, how you get it. It's on a current year funding. And of course, we're expecting that attendance will probably go down. There are parents who say, hey, until there's a vaccine or until there's a cure, I'm not sending my kid to school. I'm going to homeschool them or I'm going to put them on, uh, online. So there's that thought. Um, they, they don't seem to see that as a necessary item because the state is still under an emergency order. And therefore the sense is, and I've had lots of conversations, uh, with Caitlin Harrier from the governor's office, that the governor may have, underline the word "may," Mr. Palladini, close your ears here, the authority to by executive order exempt some of those rules for a specified period of time during which the emergency occurs. I didn't want to get bogged down in the legal circumstances. But again, it appears that the governor is willing to, to take that action. The third thing is economic recovery. And if there is a special session and if the economic recovery matter is in there, that is an opportunity for us to once again get, uh, Tourism Marketing Authorities considered before having to wait till next year's regular session. And Sandra Watson, who's the head of the Arizona Commerce Authority, and Deborah Johnson, who's the head of the Arizona Office of Tourism, have been doing a lot of work to try to develop concepts, ideas, proposals that could be done either with or without legislation to help us, help us reactivate the economy, help us get things going. And then lastly, the civil liability issue. And, and that is one of those issues that's kind of all over the map. Uh, there were several proposals that were, uh, offered, uh, and they never could quite get to sixteen in the Senate. Yet one proposal raised the burden of proof to clear and convincing and that knocked a couple of people off. And then another proposal just limited it to, to, uh, gross negligence and that knocked a couple of people. They never could quite get to sixteen, uh, although that's another item that if they do go into special session, I suspect they may want to readdress. I have talked to several attorneys, uh, who are personal injury attorneys who tell me that they have had people come to them and ask them about suing and they won't take the cases because they say it's just too darn difficult to prove culpability. And so who knows what'll happen? We'll see. I have with me twelve pages of bills that I followed for you. I can either send that to Tyler or go over each one in depth. It is your discretion. I've thoroughly enjoyed working with this council and I look forward to doing it for another two years. And by the way, the amount of the contract, uh, I specifically requested that it remain at the current level. I did not ask for any additional funding. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, Barry, thank you for coming up. Uh, thank you for all your work for the city. You do a great job with the strategic plan as well, which you didn't mention, but we always appreciate, uh, your extra, extra.
We're getting close to being ready. As the summer closes in, I look forward to coming up to Prescott to review the strategic plan again.
Yeah, that's good. Everybody wants to leave Phoenix and come up here right now.
Love it up here. Yes, sir.
Uh, questions, comments from the council? Yeah, Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mr. Aaron's. I appreciated your diligence and, uh, and monitoring. Uh, one of the bills that kind of came, um, unexpectedly was, uh, uh, House Bill Twenty-Eight Forty-Three that was sponsored by, um, Anthony Kearns to substantially change these over living home, uh, fees and penalties. Um, that was, um, really, we found out about it, I think, in, um, late February. And I personally had to do a lot of phone calling to try to, uh, see if we could get this, um, sidelined, which fortunately it was, but I have a feeling we might see it again. And there's also some question about whether, um, we need to move forward with a legislative fix on some of the, uh, concerns we had on the original, um, bill and its implementation, or whether we might be able to get some administrative, uh, uh, rule, um, relaxation so we, um, don't have some of these reporting gaps and knowledge gaps that we apparently have now. So, um, I would, uh, hope that, um, we keep a close eye on this should it, uh, resurrect itself, so to speak. Um, I don't think it does fall into those, uh, special session, uh, categories, but we might see it, um, again at the next regular session.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Good, yeah, we, we were aware of that. Um, we worked with, uh, Senator Brophy McGee, who had been one of the sponsors of the second fix two years ago. In terms of the rules, Mr. Palladini was very effective, very helpful, working with DHS. And they are open to consider improvements as we go along. Uh, the bill did not make it out. Um, it would not have got, had it passed the House and gone to the Senate, and it would not have gotten out of the Senate because there were not the votes, uh, to make those, make those changes. So, um, I, I doubt that it will rise to the level of being included in a special session because I don't think it hits any of those subjects that the governor will probably call on. Not to say that it for sure won't, but I doubt it will. But I do, uh, let me remind you, it's an election year and all ninety legislators are up for reelection. And, and, uh, you know, with, the, the margins are very, very close between the two parties in both the House and the Senate. Uh, I would not be willing in public to predict out loud what I think is going to happen. But I think it's going to be a very interesting set, uh, election. And I think there are going to be surprises. I think there always are surprises. Every year, every two years, I get up the morning after the general election and the first thing that comes out of my mouth is, wow, I didn't see that coming. So, so that is one of those bills that could be impacted by the results of the election in and of itself. But yes, it is an issue that remains on my list of issues on my whiteboard in my office of things that we perpetually follow. And Tyler and I have discussed it. And of course, we have the assistance of Mr. Palladini, who was an essential part of writing the rules at DHS two years, two years ago, three years ago, two years ago. Seems like an eternity ago, doesn't it? Yeah. So yes, sir, we, we recognize that.
Other questions, comments from the council?
Oh, I would just like to thank, uh, Mr. Aaron's for us, all his hard work and, uh, for, uh, being our connection to, uh, Phoenix and for, uh, helping us, uh, navigate, uh, the legislature down there. Thank you. Your input, your input and your insights were very valuable.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Rusing. I appreciate your help and participation. Just for the record, I just completed my fiftieth consecutive legislative session. So I've been doing this for a really long time.
Started when you were very young.
Uh, that is true.
Uh, any, anything else from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number Two Zero One Six Dash One Zero Four A Three.
Second. Motion and second. Let's take a vote.
Let me unmute Councilman Blair. Councilman Blair? Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Is that a yes vote?
Yes.
It is a yes vote.
Thank you. Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl? Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Pass the seven zero.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, we'll move on to item. Yeah, we said hi to Barry. Yes, thank you, Councilman. Uh, item ten B, please.
Approval to apply for USDA grant for community compost and food waste reduction project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tyler Goodman from the City Manager's Office. Uh, this item, we were approached a couple of weeks ago by the Prescott Farmers Market with this opportunity to apply for a grant from the USDA in the amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars, uh, the purpose for which would be to create a composting program. And, uh, it is necessary for this purpose for a city to apply. So they came to us and we looked at potential sites, properties, um, that may be good locations. They came with recommendations from the people that they collaborate with, farmers, hobby gardeners, hobby farmers and, and the like. And, um, and the location was, was chosen for the application purposes near Shimmer Drive. Let me zoom out and... Do this, make it a little darker. So the property we're talking about is right here. It is city-owned property. Uh, currently, um, there are a few things stored there. In the past, there has been a lot more stored there. Uh, here's a street view. This is quite a few years old, so it doesn't look like this necessarily today. But this is the property we'd be looking at. Uh, the grant would be used to create fencing, create the, um, the concrete bays to create. In fact, here is... Here is a proposed site plan as part of the grant application. Uh, the gate would be right off Shimmer. Uh, they would have different locations for the different types of composting, um, storage, volunteer area. And, and the idea is that it's the city's property, um, but the, the farmers market would do a lot of the, the volunteer work, the operating of, um, moving the compost piles, doing the things that they would need to do to keep those healthy and active. The city would contribute every once in a while with maybe a backhoe to help lift material, move material. Uh, it wouldn't be anything burdensome. We've worked really closely with Craig Dotzith, Public Works, Joe Baines, and Rec Services, and feel very confident that this could be done very easily. Uh, it, this grant does require a twenty-five percent match. Uh, so if we were to be granted the full amount, that'd be twenty-two thousand five hundred. But we feel very confident that between the volunteer hours, uh, of the farmers market and their folks and then city equipment, um, doing the, uh, the grading, the leveling kind of site prep, we believe that we could match that very quickly, very easily. And so today we are simply looking for approval to apply. If we are granted the money, we'd be coming back, uh, with more information, more details, and, uh, come back for your approval. But the deadline is in three days. So we figured we'd come quickly and, and see what you think.
Well, it's a great project. Thank you, Tyler. Uh, questions, comments from the council? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just think it's a great idea. I had the opportunity to talk about it on the radio this morning and I just commend, uh, the farmers market. And, uh, you know, once we get the Hilton Garden open over there and hopefully we'll have the farmers market over there. And it's just, it's a great opportunity to have a community compost. I like that idea. So great idea. And I appreciate them bringing it to us.
Um, Councilmember Rusing?
Uh, thank you. I would just like to make the comment that composting saves water because you're not running your garbage disposal and all the water that it takes to wash, for example, potato peelings down into the sewer. And it also creates more space in our landfill. It keeps the, uh, food out of the landfill. And also it's, creates, uh, less solid waste for our, uh, water treatment plants. So I just would like to commend, uh, everybody that, uh, the farmers market and also all the volunteers and also the, uh, I believe the AmeriCorps volunteers that, uh, got the farmers market, uh, going for us. Thank you.
Other comments? Uh, Councilman Good?
Yeah, I think this is, um, a valuable, uh, community use for a really underused, uh, piece of property. And, um, I think it's appropriate that the council is talking about composting today. I support it.
Other comments? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I feel, I feel to recognize, we have Kathleen and Gabe here from the Prescott Farmers Market. So I want to thank them for being here.
Great. Thank you. Uh, entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve CCFWR grant, application to the USDA for composting in the amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars.
Second. Motion and second. Let's take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Pass the seven zero.
All right. Let's move on to item ten C, please.
Approval of City Contract Number Two Zero Two Zero Dash Two One Seven with Motorola Solutions for the purchase of fire department handheld radios.
Very good. So Nate, go ahead. Mayor had to step out.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Nate Keegan with the IT Department. Uh, I figured I've come before you for radio-related items in the past. So it occurred to me this morning, you may not hang out with people that use radios all the time or are that familiar with what we're talking about here. As you see up on the screen here is a current fire department radio. One thing you might notice about this radio is that it's missing some hardware. For example, buttons, antenna. This, this actual radio fell off one of our fire trucks and was run over. Um, and the point of this is that one of the things that I get asked, and I would suspect you might be asking, is if you do the math on today's item divided by eighty-one radios, my University of Arizona masses, that's about four thousand eight hundred dollars per radio. That seems like a lot of money per a radio, which is a very good point. And it is. One of the things that's really important about public safety radios and fire radios in particular is these radios have to not only be depended upon, they have to be what's referred to as intrinsically safe. So the batteries can't catch fire in high heat environments. They can't short out. They can't cause fires in high particulate environments because of electronics interacting with fine particles. That is why these cost what they do. The expected service life of these radios would be ten years or more, which is what we currently have run these radios at. One of the things you're going to get if this is approved is we will use the same radios that Prescott Valley Police uses, that CAFMA uses, and Prescott Police uses. Everybody other than the sheriff on this side of Yavapai County who's large, same platform, same technical specs, same radios. There's a lot of benefits to doing that, especially given how our agencies all interoperate. Um, with that, I know Chief Light's here behind me floating around to answer questions. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay. Thanks, Nate. Questions, comments from the council?
Mayor?
Uh, yeah, Councilman.
I know that in emergency situations, um, in the past, there's always some comment about the inability to communicate with other, uh, agencies that are working on, uh, major disaster responses. So why is it that we won't be able to communicate with the sheriff's office?
We do actually communicate with the sheriff's office. They use a different radio model than we do. However, at the end of the day, it shouldn't matter if you're using brand X, brand Y, brand Z. It needs to be a public safety rated radio. But I should be able to pick up one of their radios if I'm a firefighter. They should be able to pick up one of our radios and communicate across the county, across situations. And that is the case. We have very good working relationships with YCSO, PRCC partners across the board.
What about the National Forest, um, Response Teams?
Yeah. Uh, the fire department maintains a separate cache of radios that they take with them on wildland events, which are really the, the benefit of those radios, super easy to program in the field. So if we go out to a fire, Forest Service shows up, BLM shows up, State Fire shows up. We can all coordinate as a group. To modify our frequency so we can actually do what we need to do. Not to say you can't do that with these radios. It's just a, a peculiarity that these agencies tend to use this particular brand to do that sort of job. And they tend to gravitate toward just a handful of brands who do public safety radios that are duty rated for the kind of use and abuse of these radios we'll see.
On a daily basis.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other comments? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number Two Zero Two Zero Dash Two One Seven.
Second. Motion and second. Let's take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Pass the seven zero.
All right. Thank you. Uh, let's move on to item ten D, please.
Approval of City Contract Number Two Zero Two Zero Dash One Nine Five with Yavapai Humane Society for a three-year animal shelter service agreement.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Debbie Bat Black, Police Chief. Um, the Police Department on behalf of the city is requesting authorization to enter into an agreement with Yavapai County Humane Society to continue operating the Prescott impound facility to provide for dogs and cats impounded by the city of Prescott. This is a three-year contract beginning July first, twenty twenty. The first year amount of sixty thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars will be available through the general fund with minimal additional contract costs in years two and three of the contract. Lieutenant Corey Cassoon and Animal Control Officer Shannon Gray are available to answer any questions you have regarding the services provided through this contract agreement. Rick Mclish, Executive Director of the Yavapai Humane Society, is also here and would like to speak following public comment, if any. That concludes my presentation and we will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Lieutenant, do you have anything to add? No, just move, nope. Okay. Questions, comments from the council? All right. Public comment?
Ellen Buckholz.
So just a reminder, we have three minutes and you have a little light here to help you, uh, gauge your time.
Good afternoon. My name's Ellen Buckholz. I've sent you a few letters, um, regarding our concerns about the Yavapai Humane Society. I'd like to let you all know that I'm a thirty-four-year resident of Prescott. I'm a public school, former public school Prescott teacher. Um, if I seem to yell today, know that it's my nerves and, um, that I'm passionate and that I have a teacher's voice. a teacher's voice. I wish I was here to extol the accomplishments of YHS, but sadly, that's not the case today. For the last two years, I've been sending you complaints about the Yavapai Humane Society, but here we are today with a three-year contract about to be awarded to an unethical nonprofit organization. Why haven't you heard our pleas for the well-being of our animals and the public? I'm a former Prescott teacher. We have a banker, lawyers, animal rescuers, probation officers, administrators, business owners, et cetera, in our group, and we all have concerns about the Yavapai Humane Society. Most of us were very dedicated volunteers for years at YHS, but then we got fired. And what was our egregious crime? Caring for the animals. We care, and we dared to speak up. The Yavapai Humane Society has a carefully crafted, perfected, and well-promoted narrative for the public that they protect from truth tellers like us by threatening them to keep the money flowing. Far from being awarded a contract by our city, this organization needs to be fully investigated and the truth told about all of their misleading advertising, their abusive policies towards real animal protectors, and their refusal to be transparent by meeting and answering questions regarding anything, especially their finances. And that's why we have filed whistleblower complaints with the IRS, the Arizona Attorney General, and the Prescott Police Department. We believe this nonprofit that functions as a result of local money and hours of volunteer time owes our public the truth. Truth that the Yavapai Humane Society Executive Director was hired off the board as a cover-up with no animal welfare experience when the public specifically requested nine years. Truth that the Little Board of Directors is just that, too small according to their own bylaws. Truth that animals are killed, and that YHS uses loopholes that they feel absolve them of truth. Truth that a YHS employee remarked that from 2013 to 2016, she herself killed over 500 dogs.
If you can wrap it up, that'd be great. Yep, three minutes, and your time's up.
I'm sorry. I tried so hard. Thank you for listening. I hope that you will really consider postponing this contract, or at minimum, give them just one year so that we can work together to make changes for the betterment of our animal care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie Endward?
This is important for our animals.
We need it to be quiet in the chamber, please.
Hello, my name is Connie Endward, and I'm a 16-year resident of this area. And I too have come here because I see what Ellen sees, and all of the other people are here with us today. There are many of us. It's not just us. There's many of us who have suffered through harassment and all kinds of threats, because we want the Humane Society to act transparently. We want answers to the questions of their financial statements. I'm a 45-year banker, and what I did for a living was analyze and review financial statements. Their financial statements for the past five years have a ton of red flags. They are, certainly they are done by an auditor, or they say they are, but as our book tells us about fraud, very, very seldom does fraud get caught by auditors. Mostly, it's caught by whistleblowers. There is a number of things that they have done that need to be explained. Number one, and the most important one of this, is that they continually tell the public that they are a private foundation. I have a letter from the IRS dated April 19, 2018, that tells them the exact opposite. In no uncertain terms, it says they are a public charity. Public charity is any organization 501(c) who gets more than 33 1/3%. If they get more than 33 1/3% of their income from donations, they are considered a public charity. They get 97% of their income from our donors here in the community. And it's those donors we're looking out for. Some of these people can't afford the money they send there. Where does the money go? It certainly doesn't look like it goes to enrich the dogs or the cats. There's no run for the dogs. There's nothing, nothing in the way, an enhancement for any of the animals there. No toys, nothing. And they are consistently telling anybody who complains that they don't have to listen to them, because they're a private foundation, which they are not. In addition to that, they have, over the past five years, brought in $15.2 million. Okay, where's the dog runs for that?
Mayor?
Where's the increased facilities for the animals? I don't see it, and I don't know you, I know you don't see it either. So the question is, where does the money go, and why won't they answer our questions? Maybe everything's fine.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you.
So, Mayor, I'm not sure what direction. Are there more public speakers?
I just have one public comment that was received through the website.
Well, so, I'm not sure what direction the next public speaker's going to go in, but the topic here is the contract for our animal control services. And so going down some of these paths that are, I think, way outside the discussion about the contract and that are potentially defamatory concerns me. So I'm not sure where the next speaker's going, but I think we need to sort of reel it into the, we're talking about the contract and whether the Humane Society provides a service that we're contracting for. And some of these other sort of allegations are way outside of, I think, this topic.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Palladine. Do you have one more?
I do. This was submitted by Tammy Lambert. Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, I have heard enough evidence from previous volunteers and employees to be concerned about the City of Prescott's contract with the Yavapai Humane Society. The information being given to Mayor and City Council justifies limiting the contract to a year contract as opposed to three at present until this information can be satisfactorily investigated and addressed.
Okay. No other public comment?
And then just Rich Mclish from the Humane Society.
Okay. Rich?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I want to thank Ellen Buckholz for finally coming out into the light with these accusations. And I hope you noticed that there is a video camera. So we are going to have a great time with some of these remarks. She's been attacking the organization for two years. And I'm so sorry that we're not going to talk a little bit about the contract, but for two years, she has harassed our organization to the point that when this first started, I was on the board, came on the board in September 2018. We hired an outside investigator to look at 36 written accusations.
If you can address, yeah, address us, please.
36 accusations. This person came up from Phoenix, did an outside investigation, found 30 of those accusations to be completely untrue. This all stems from one thing and one thing only. And I'm going to read this real quick.
So we're talking about the contract here, right? Are we?
Well, I feel like I have to.
We need to talk about the contract.
All right, well, let's talk about the contract. We have a great partnership with Pres, the City of Prescott. You guys, the city's been great. Shannon has been great. It's gotten to a point, if you look at the contract, that there was a zero rate, 0% rate increase this year, and there's only a 2% for the next couple of years. The partnership is working great. We have a clear understanding of what needs to be done. We provide impound services for the City of Prescott. We've been around since 1972. All I have to say is this, if there was any funny business at YHS, Yavapai County ACO, the Town of Prescott Valley ACO, the City of Prescott ACO, our past staff and current staff will not stand by any of this. We have a very ethical police department here. We have a very ethical city here. We would not stand for one second if we were doing all these things that these people brain up. And what amazes me is if you look at their pictures on Facebook, these are photos from 2014, 15, 16, and 17, when that group was at the shelter. And until her son got fired a year and a half ago, two years ago.
So we're talking about the contract, the contract.
Yeah, well, I apologize. I apologize, Mayor. It's been, let me just say this, I have, the Board of Directors wanted to be here today, and they felt physically threatened by this group. So, and I'm sorry, because they really wanted to give you kudos for all the good work that we've had with the City of Prescott.
So, Mayor, just kind of addressing the contract issue, the three years, we, there is in Section 5 termination provisions in there in the event, you know, for convenience, for cause, and for health and safety of the animals. So that's intentionally put in, in the contract, in this three-year contract. So staff's recommending three years because of the economics of the deal. But again, if something were to occur where the city's not happy with the services for whatever reason, we have the ability to cancel.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions coming from the council? Councilmember Rusing?
Oh, I just would like some clarification as to how big the service area is for the shelter. Is it the quad cities, the county? Who other, who else do they have contracts with?
Lieutenant?
Councilmember Rusin, I believe I can answer your question today. So, Yavapai Humane Society provides service for animal shelter and impounds for the City of Prescott, Prescott Valley, and Yavapai County.
Okay, thank you. That's a, that's a big area. Yavapai County, yeah.
Councilman Sishka?
Thank you. Can you tell me about your relationship with the Yavapai Humane Society?
I have limited time spent out there. Our ACO supervisor, Shannon Gray, spends many hours out there. She impounds all of our animals. And they also take over-the-counter impounds from, from people that bring them in from our community. She shows up unannounced and does her own looking around the shelter. And she has been unable to verify any of the allegations that are, that have been brought up today. Prescott loves its animals, and so do we. And we have been unable to substantiate any of those.
Thank you. Councilmember Rusing?
Oh, I just, I just remember I asked a local veterinarian, a longtime local veterinarian, and she felt that the animal shelter had a wonderful reputation, and she hadn't heard of any problems.
Okay.
Our relationship is good with them, yeah.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I'd like to say that Councilman Sishka and I sat down with Shannon and Officer, and this was about a year, about a year ago, right, Steve? And we certainly left there thinking that things were right where they need to be with regard to the animal shelter.
Okay. Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2020-195.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Let's take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
All right. Thank you for that. Let's move on to item 10E, please.
Approval of city contract number 2020-211 with Lion Engineering and Surveying for Design and Engineering Services for the Willow Creek Gravity Sewer Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eric Bay with Public Works. This next item is an exciting.
Hang on just a second. If you guys want to exit here real quick so we can get on with the meeting, please? Thank you. All right, Eric, I think we're okay to go. Good to see you, by the way.
Yeah, good to see everybody. I know I've been absent from the council chamber for the last few months because of the pandemic, so it's good to be back. So this is a exciting sewer project, and it's exciting because it's, it's simple at its core, but it's going to be challenging to implement. And the simplicity is that all we're really doing is extending some gravity sewer here, but the complexity is that we're actually changing our entire operation scheme throughout the Willow Lake Road corridor. So I brought a map to kind of explain what we're doing here. So I'll start with the existing infrastructure. Currently, we have the Willow Lake Regional Lift Station right here, which collects sewage, and it pumps it through a 14-inch force main to the east. As it pumps it to the east, it passes by the Willow Lake Estates Lift Station where this arrow is pointing here. This lift station pumps sewage into the same force main, and it continues east until it reaches the Prescott Lakes Regional Lift Station. And you guessed it, this lift station pumps sewage into the same force main to the east until it goes up through the Dells and discharges into the airport trunk main. So that's what we have existing. This project, as I mentioned, will put in gravity sewer from the Willow Lake Regional Lift Station down the Willow Lake Road corridor to the Prescott Lakes Regional Lift Station. By doing that, we will be able to abandon the Willow Lake Regional Lift Station and all the challenges that are coming with that lift station. The Willow Lake Estates Lift Station will be able to be abandoned as well, as well as all the operational and maintenance costs that go with that lift station. And then at the same time with this project, we will upgrade and upsize the Prescott Lakes Regional Lift Station to handle these additional flows. One side benefit that we noticed while planning out this route is there is a private HOA-owned lift station right here that we believe we can also work with the HOA and potentially help them by abandoning a lift station and accept their flows by gravity flow. So, as you can guess, there are a lot of benefits to this project. Number one, cost benefits. Instead of spending money upgrading, upsizing existing sites, we can eliminate the sites altogether. Lifecycle costs. Now we don't have to operate, maintain, replace pumps, rehabilitate the site, rehabilitate wet wells. So the cost savings will continue into the future. There's an environmental benefit to this project as well. If you notice, all four of the lift stations that I mentioned are along Willow Lake. Anything mechanical like that has the potential for failure and overflow. So this eliminates at three sites the ability, or the potential to overflow into our pristine Willow Lake. And at the Prescott Lakes Regional Lift Station site, we're going to add redundant wet well capacity and redundant pumping capacity, and that will greatly diminish the potential for an environmental concern in that area. Another benefit of this is going to be, there's a small safety aspect. The Willow Lake Regional Lift Station right here is actually a dry pit lift station, and I'll spare the technical details of that, but it requires our operators from time to time to enter confined space and work closer to heavy and dangerous equipment than they otherwise would with a typical submersible lift station design. So the benefits are great. The operational scheme will be better. Instead of having three lift stations discharging into a single force main, it's going to be one point of discharge and one point of pumping. So it'll be easier for our operations staff to control as well. We've selected a fantastic engineering firm, Lion Engineering, to perform the design work on this. We selected them because they had quals on file from a recent RFQ for on-call. They have familiarity with this corridor. They actually did a little bit of the groundwork to determine if this alignment was indeed feasible, which it is. And they've recently completed work on the airport trunk main project, which went seamlessly. And we want to take that success and implement it into this project as well. So we've negotiated a scope and fee. Staff's comfortable with where we're at. We're recommending award at this time. And if you have any questions, I'll take them now.
Great presentation, Eric. Thank you. Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusin?
Oh, nice presentation, and I'm glad we're using a local, talented engineering firm such as Lion. I, I do have a question about the length. How many linear feet is this sewer line going to be? It's over a mile, isn't it?
It is. The total length will be determined during final design, but at this point, we're estimating about 7,000 linear feet of gravity sewer main will be installed with the project.
About 1.2 miles. And then, I don't know if you can answer this, but we know what the engineering costs are going to be, but what do you estimate the construction costs? For example, like installation per linear foot. I know you have to put it out to bid and everything. I know you have to put it out to bid and everything, but just so I can just get an idea of, of how much the project is.
Yeah, absolutely. So a very high-level estimate has been generated at this point, and that's $5 to $6 million for total construction cost. As I mentioned, this project is going to be extremely challenging to implement with so many sites, so many connections, abandonments of multiple lift stations, and then the increase of one of our, our larger, more critical lift station sites with a redundant wet well, with additional controls and pumping capabilities. In addition to this project being a trunk main for us, our Willow Creek trunk main, so we're going to do it correctly. We're going to put in completely corrosion-proof manholes, and we're going to put in the best pipe available so that this system will operate for the citizens of Prescott long after we're all gone.
Do you think we're going to have to bond this, or do you think we have enough money to...
Funding is available in the wastewater fund.
All right, thank you.
Other comments?
Is that for the entire project or just this first phase? You were saying that the funding is available in the wastewater fund.
This project will be completed as a, a unit source project. We're not going to phase this project out.
Hey, good.
Any other comments? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2020-211.
Second.
Motion and second, let's take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Likewise done, yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Or?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you, Eric. Let's go to item 10F.
Approval of city contract number 2020-143A1, an amendment to city contract number 2020-143 with Willdan Engineering to extend the original contract through fiscal year 2021.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Bryn Stotler, Director of Community Development. As promised last month, when I brought you some updated information on the success of our contract to date, I am back in front of you with an amendment to the contract for fiscal year 21. We've plugged that number in at $125,000. Willdan continues to support our voluminous work up in the North Prescott, master plan subdivisions, Granite Dells Estates, Walden Farms, Deepwell Ranch, including Antelope Crossings, and any others that may crop up in the meantime. Willdan has been performing wonderfully. The primary basis of the contract right now is they're providing a full-time inspector who works those subdivisions for us. The work is voluminous. I've updated the economic data that I brought to you last month. I thought you might be, find that interesting considering our reopening and our, and our potential recovery from the, the slowdown. So let's start with inspections. I'll just recap for you. Again, this is a comparison between 2019 and 20, and keep in mind that the information on the left reflects the full first quarter for both of those years. And then we break out into monthly data, starting in March, April, and May. So as you can see, our inspections have maintained pace and even exceeded pace of 2019. Little bit of a slip in March, but basically same numbers, and then exceeded in April by at least a couple of hundred, and then kind of running about neck and neck for the first part of June. Actually, sorry, April, May, June. Didn't mean to confuse timeframes there. So inspections are running just as we expect, at the level we expect, and volume has been very high. And so this support has been integral to our success in keeping up with what is needed out there in those subdivisions. Now we'll take a look at single-family residence permits. I would estimate from just statistical review that these subdivisions comprise about 60% to 70% of our active permits, whether applied for, under review, or issued. So as you can see, in the first quarter, the comparison between 19 and 2020 was quite, quite similar. Starting in April, we started to see the effect of the pandemic on our volumes, and so we did have a little bit of a slide there. And then in May, not much of a difference. 35 single-family residence permits in 2019 to 25 in 2020. And then as you look at the month-to-date data for June, permits are running neck and neck for the same time period in 2019 to, to 2020. So we're quite encouraged, we're very busy. We have about 80 permits currently pending intake through our electronic process, which is a very strong indicator of the growth that is continuing to occur out in that area. And Willdan is a very integral part of our success with handling this volume, and we hope that you'll consider the renewal of the contract for fiscal year 21. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bryn. Questions, comments from the council?
I have one, Mayor.
Councilman.
Bryn, I, I know that you, you've really streamlined the electronic permitting for large projects. What about for the smaller projects?
I think what I would say as far as our, our success with the electronic process right now is that we're still utilizing our workaround that was created because we were closing the doors to City Hall, and we had to motivate quite quickly in order to accommodate an electronic process. So right now, our Central Square software program that was purchased to assist us with online applications, that final piece of a customer module, which would allow the customer to actually apply from the comfort of their home or their office, is not yet launched. That will be launched probably mid to late July. That is the final piece of our Central Square implementation. So right now, I wouldn't say that the current workaround process is assisting us with getting through the, the volume of smaller projects. They all come into the same, what's called FTP site, meaning they're all uploaded to the same basic file folder. And it takes a, a fair amount of time for our permitting team to go through all of those electronic submissions, determine the width and breadth of the project's scope. And small projects do tend to come in just like right along with the big ones. So we're working hard to streamline the workaround process. We don't want to spend too much time trying to refine it because we anticipate, again, within less than a month, moving over to that fully online application module.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Rusi?
Thank you. I just would like to ask the same question. This amendment and extension to the contract will continue to be funded by the production builders and, because I see that we have the general fund involved here.
Yes. So our department is funded by the general fund. Those production builders, of course, pay building permit fees, they pay plan review fees, they pay inspection fees, and the contract is funded through the general fund with partial cost recovery. And the reason that that is referenced that way is that Willdan bills us 75% of our plan review fee, our total calculated plan review fee. We recoup the 25% that they don't bill us through the payments from the builders. So if, I hope that makes sense. Our, our department is not fully funded by building permit, plan review, and inspection fees. I think the average, and I would maybe defer to Mr. Woodfill, but I think the average reflection of how much we cover our own costs is at about 65% to 70%.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2020-143A1.
Second.
Motion and second, let's take a vote.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Yes.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Or?
Yes.
And Mayor Mangarelli?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Bryn. Best for last, Mr. Woodfill. Item 10G, please.
Public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 budget expenditure limitation and tax levies, and at a special meeting, adoption of resolution number 2020-1748, adopting the final fiscal year 2021 budget expenditure limitation and city job roster.
Thank you, Mark Woodfill, Budget and Finance Director. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This, again, just kind of to recap here, I have the full budget process that we've gone through, of course, starting in December with strategic planning, down to the May 19th workshop that we had, as well as adoption of the tentative budget two weeks ago. From that, the tentative budget summary and the notice of this hearing is to be published once a week for two consecutive weeks. It was published correctly on June 14th. However, when we came in Monday and looked at the Sunday paper for the 21st, we found that it was not published correctly. So out of an abundance of caution and wanting to get as many people to participate in the process, as possible, and the fact that our timeline does allow us to slide the schedule a little bit, we are going to postpone the actual, or continue the actual public hearing from today until July 14th and postpone the action to actually consider the budget to the July 14th meeting. That would push, push the consideration of the property tax to the meeting of the 28th. My thought, and again, with council's agreement, would be just to run through a couple of general slides, open it up if anybody is here from the public to talk today, and we'll do the same thing on the 14th, and then have our special meeting after that. The publication, the second or the final correct publication will be in the paper on the 5th of July and the 12th of July. It will be, this is what we will be publishing, which is basically acknowledging that the public hearing is being continued to the 14th with consideration of those three things, the 2021 budget, the 2021 expenditure limitation, and the property tax levy for 2021 at a public hearing on the 14th, and then the property tax will be moved on or acted on by council on the 28th. This is the summary that was published in the paper. It's Schedule A of the Legals, as well as you'll notice in the notice, it gives you where the full budget can be found, which is on our website at prescott-az.gov. It can also be looked at in physical form here at City Hall any day of the week that we are open. Obviously, we'll be closed July 3rd, I believe, but other than that, it's 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. And with that, I just wanted to recap real quick. The final budget is the same as we talked about at the tentative. It's $206 million. There's a lot of contingencies in here, like we talked about, for depending on what the economic activity actually is, and as well as the CARES money that we received. Looking at the property tax side of things, this is Schedule B from the Legals, and you can see our property tax levy went up just a little bit in relation to new construction that was added to the tax roll. The property tax rate is actually moving from .259 down to 2.2484. So we always look at a $200,000 house, and if council, again, in the future, would like me to up that to a 300 or 400, we can always do that, knowing that a $200,000 house isn't what it used to be here in Prescott. But as you can see, our, our rate is across the bottom in the bar graphs. So in 20, fiscal year 20, which is the year we are currently in, a $200,000 house would pay $52 to the city in property tax. In '21, they will pay 4968. So just going down just a bit. And of course, we always compare to our CAFMA, which is what you're in. If you're not in the city, you're in the fire district, and you would not pay 52, you would pay $560 to be in there. With that, I guess we would open up to public comment, or, and then continue it from there.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Is there a public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Rusi?
Thank you, Mark. I would just like to ask you a question on, under the expenditure page, under city court. City court total is $654 for 2020, 651 for 2021, and I would just, was wondering what that included, because I couldn't find anything under the authorized position roster that included court, the city court, maybe it's, it's in here and I just can't find it.
So, okay, council, we'll, we'll give it a try here, and if not, I will definitely have an answer for you by the 14th. So in the general fund, the city court is one of our departments. It was budgeted at 629. Their estimated ending for the year is 592, and their budget request for next year is 620. So it's actually going down a little bit in their budget requests. There were no new positions added. If you look also on our website, we have a draft version of the, of the budget book, the 400-page book with all the detail you ever wanted to know about the city budget in it, which would have additional information. We also have the job roster, and we can pull that up if you would like to see the positions in the city court. Get that over to the right screen here.
Oh, there it is. I found it down at the bottom of...
Right, they're in alphabet order, and there they are.
You skipped over that.
Yeah. It's a clerk, city court, there you go, seven. And again, that's the shared court, it's a joint court facility. The judge is a contract employee, so he is not there. We have the business manager and six clerks, and then the county has comparable, the same number, actually a few more employees, I believe. And then we also pay a portion of the court administrator and the bailiff's salary.
Thank you.
Other comments?
One comment. When will you get the next TPT report from the state?
And that's one fortunate thing about this, I will, should hopefully have that information by the 14th, so we'll be able to look at it when we look at this item again on the 14th.
It'll be very valuable, I think.
Yeah.
Yep, agreed.
Can you describe what the publishing error was?
The publishing error, as I said, on the first, on the first publishing, they did it correctly, the schedule, that schedule I showed you, Schedule A was there, and the ordinance that you adopted for the tentative budget, which identified today as the public hearing, the location of the documents so people could review them, and the time and all that, basically that stuff's in that public notice. On the 21st, they published the schedule again, but they did not publish the notice of the public hearing. So we, of course, want to make sure everybody who wants to talk has an opportunity, and we have time because our property tax needs to be adopted before the third Monday of August, and with the timeline, we have to wait two weeks after the public hearing to consider property tax, and we made it, so we went ahead.
Other comments? Councilmember Rusi?
Oh, I just remembered the CARES Act. I believe we're going to get a $5 million infusion. Is there, is that included in this budget, or do we have any plans for it, or could you enlighten me, please?
Certainly. Let me get back to my slides here.
Councilman Blair? And we're not going to bore you with my comments tonight this late, but I'll have plenty of comments from Mr. Woodfill later this week. One of them would be, I see the spread on the employees, but I don't see exactly where our employees are following within that spread. Also, I'd really like to know where we're at with pay compensation study. So those are concerns that I have, and of course, you already know what my concern is about pay for the employees, so I'll just leave that alone and not beat that switch right now.
Well, I kind of appreciate that, councilman. The spread, what are you talking about there, the initial thing you're asking?
When you look at the spreadsheet that's presented there, the employees, and you see, you know, I understand that the department heads are not listed, and as you go down, and you look at lieutenant, and you look at lieutenant, and you see a spread, different years, where are we in that spread with our employees?
Well, employees are anywhere along that spread, councilmen, depending on their years with the city and their raises that they've received over their tenure with the city. That's the range, that's the beginning of the range and the maximum of the range.
And that range was produced how many years ago?
It was part of the study that was done in 2015, so five years ago.
Okay, and are we working on... Okay, and are we working on one now?
Yes, we are, and we can have more of a report for you on that on the 14th. But yeah, HR is working on that, and it should be to council in the fall of this year.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Thank you, councilman.
If I could get back to Councilwoman, Member Rusi's question. As you'll remember, I have up there on the screen the budget as a whole. During the budget workshop, the contingency that we had in here was about $5 million. It was increased between that and the tentative budget, $5 million, so that that CARES funding could be spent. So it is in the final budget.
Thank you.
Other comments? And you said there was no public comment, right?
Correct.
So, Mark, we're going to move to close the public hearing, then I'm just going to adjourn this meeting.
No, I believe we're going to leave the public hearing open until the 14th.
So there's no action here at all?
No action, I believe.
Nope, you have a meeting already noticed up for the 14th, and then the public notice will run again twice, back to back. Do we need to convene a special meeting tonight and defer that?
So no action?
No action tonight.
So that's your one mistake you're allowed this year?
Just to clarify...
No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
It was not my mistake, it was my good friend's at the Courier's mistake.
That's a good deflection, I like that.
It was, yes. And as such, the Courier will be providing the next two publications free.
Oh, that's awfully nice of them. Okay. Well, our quote is, we're running up to Independence Day here, so that's on my mind. This is Stephen Covey. "Every human has four endowments: self-awareness, conscience, independent will, and creative imagination. These give us the ultimate human freedom, the power to choose, to respond, and to change." This meeting is adjourned.